Okay, on that note, we'll go ahead and call a meeting in order. Our first, our screen is not on what I need here, so let me pull this up. So our first call order is actions in closed session.
On a seven to zero vote, the board in closed session voted to issue a notice of rejection of claim pursuant to government code section nine one three.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and do the emigration led by myself and then the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Terry Witt. So in these times when we've had discussions the past few months and will be continuing to have discussions on the importance of mental health and services for those in need, to hear the news of two students from the Parkland shooting committing suicide out of depression and survivor's guilt further emphasizes the reasons why we need to reach out and help our students. So I'd like to take a moment of silence on their behalf and all the others needing help. Thank you very much.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I have two requests to speak for public comments. First, we have Jeanne Agassi wishing to speak. Oh, you want it, Louis, you want to go first? You're up. All right, Louis can go first. So then first, we have Louis Long and then Jeanne Agassi on deck.
I think my back. Sorry. I thought you said you were.
But we want to hear from you. Just tell us, tell us how, tell us how Boyd's retirement is going.
I'm Louis Long. I'm a faculty member at Irvine Valley College in the English department, and I also happen to be the chief negotiator for the Faculty Association, which is the dedicated bargaining unit for the faculty in the South Orange County Community College District. And I am here to inform the public and remind the board that we have finished contract negotiations and achieved what I believe to be a very good contract, although there is certainly still room for improvement in the plight of our part-time faculty members and their salary compensation. I wanted to thank the members of the faculty negotiating team. That's Claire Cesario, Mark Blethyn, in no particular order, Blake Stevens, I'm just kind of going around the room, Susan Bliss, Jenny Langrell, Parisa Sultani, and Kurt Meyer, who are the members of the faculty negotiating team, who are a very selfless and dedicated group of people who've put in countless hours negotiating this contract. I wanted to thank the district's negotiating team, who were incredibly well-prepared and very professional, and I think we were working together, although differing on certain individual issues, we were working together for the common good, and I think it was very productive. And I also want to thank the board for their guidance in reaching this successful contract negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what you were going to say, okay, thanks. Thanks. All right, we'll go ahead and move then to board reports. I've been requested to start at this end again, sorry. Trustee Lang.
I have no report.
Okay. Trustee Jay.
March has been another very busy month. I am again reminded of the positive impact we have on our community. Our students, our faculty, administration, and staff make South Orange County the fine organization it is. Since the last board meeting, I've attended several college and district events. I'd like to emphasize two of them. On Saturday, March ninth, I attended the IVC Foundation Awards Dinner, celebrating excellence at the Feek Day venue in Costa Mesa. Lisa Greenberg, president of IVC Foundation, has done an outstanding job this year. Thank you, Lisa, for all your hard work and excellent leadership. Also, thank you to Damon Howard of Noble Martins. Noble Martins is the community partner of excellence this year. A huge thanks goes to the executive director of the foundation, Alyssa Oransky, her staff, Karen Orlando, Karen Jimenez, and Janice Visco. Many thanks to many others who helped make this event such a success. The awards dinner was very well-attended and raised much-needed funding for the foundation work. The silent and live auctions were fun and added greatly to the success of the event and to the foundation's endowment. Thanks in particular to the people and organizations that contributed fabulous items for the auction and to the auctioneer. At the dinner, awards for outstanding performance and service were announced, and I'd like to pay tribute to the recipient, recipients here. Student Award for Excellence, Don Hohn Shin, Communications Major. Veteran Student Award for Excellence, Travis Grafton, Engineering Major. Faculty Award for Excellence, Edwin Tongensen, Communication Study Professor. Administrator Award of Excellence, Brooke Bai, Dean of Liberal Arts. Classified Award for Excellence, Ann Akers, IVC Outreach Specialist. And Community Partner of Excellence, Noble Martins Intellectual Property Attorneys. The IVC Alumni of the Year was Shandi Perashyev, founder of the Ability Awareness Project in Laguna Beach nonprofit. On March eleventh, I attended the Courage to Remember Holocaust Exhibit Reception at the IVC Performing Arts Center. Opening remarks were by Chancellor Kathleen Burke, Board President TJ Pendergast, Assemblywoman Cotty Petri Norris, and others set the tone for a sobering and educational evening. The highlight of the evening was a talk by a Holocaust survivor, Bertie Dubinowski. Her story was riveting, and I wish she could have spoken for another hour. The event was well-attended, and I came away with a new understanding of this terrible period in history.
Okay, thank you. So I too, obviously, attended the Courage to Remember as I spoke, and Bertie Lubinowski, come to understand that there was a small typo, did an excellent job speaking and had everyone well-moved. The exhibit itself is moving, if you have the opportunity to view that. As I said in my remarks, the ability to see something that here, instead of having to travel to LA or DC or to the actual locations in Europe, it's an excellent opportunity for our students and anyone in the community. I also had an opportunity, took a day out of my family vacation in Northern Virginia to pop over to DC to do some lobbying. Excellent presentation and paperwork put together by our office, Letitia Clark, and then Amanda Fenton, and Dana did an excellent job preparing me and then having everything prepared for those meetings. We met with the American Association of Community Colleges, Martha Param, Matthew Dembicki, and David Blame, or Bame, sorry, and lots of great information of what their efforts are going on in DC on our behalf. And it was really informative to find out from them, but they, we apparently educated them as well. They did not really fully understand some of the things that we offer. So that was good on everyone's part. We also then met with members of the Department of Education, Rashawn Moore, who is in charge of student services, and then also the Annapese Grant Leader. His name is escaping me because he didn't give me his card. But he was very informative as well and gave us great ideas of how we could possibly go for some grant money that's going to come available, so I'm sure Amanda will be contacting the colleges with that information. And then our last meeting was with Casey Sax, the new appointee to, as the Deputy Assistant Secretary for Community Colleges in the Department of Ed, and she, she's, she's a smart one. It's a, it's a good appointee from this president to, in that regard, and she's going to do some great things for community colleges nationally as well as for us, so we're excited about that. And that's it.
Thank you. Well, I was very pleased to see the CBA move forward and get ratified by the Faculty Association. I think our faculty is indispensable to what we do and so valuable to both colleges. And Louis, thank you for your remarks and, and right back at you, we're very happy to see this agreement move forward. I thank the administration as well, and Cindy and her team, and everyone else that was involved. Very, very good day for our district and our colleges. I also want to apologize a little bit to the foundation. I already have the IVC Foundation. It's the first gala that I've missed in, since my six years on the board, but from what I hear, was successful, so I'm pleased to hear that, and the net amount raised hopefully will allow for more scholarships to be offered this coming year. Congratulations to Alyssa and the team. And I'd like to offer my congratulations to a former member of this board, who was elected a couple of weeks ago, to the County Board of Supervisors, Don Wagner, who served, I believe, on this board for 12 years. He will be the next supervisor, I think, in District Four, which has Irvine and other surrounding areas, so I think is swearing in is this week. And then final, I just want to say we have a board policy committee. It's been working well. We've got some things on the agenda for this evening and look forward to the rest of the meeting. Thanks.
I attended the Foundation Awards Dinner. My wife and I were guests there on March the ninth. It was their annual Foundation Awards Dinner at Fete, the venue in Costa Mesa. Nearly 300 guests came to, came out to celebrate the evening, and seven reward recipients, as well as, they raised a lot of money, and it was a wonderful evening. Also, I attended the reception, the opening reception for the world-renowned Holocaust exhibit that you've already heard about. That was on March the 11th. My wife and I also attended that. Attendees included Marcia Milchecker, myself, and you've already heard from Bobby, that she was, she went also. We enjoyed the event that evening.
Thanks. I'll try not to repeat anything. I felt guilty about missing the IVC Foundation event, so I left Hawaii early and came back in order to attend it. So my husband and I attended it. Alyssa Oransky did a fabulous job as usual, and I was really glad. I left Hawaii to come to the Foundation Awards Dinner. I really was. I was really happy I did that. That was the right thing to do, and I felt good about it.
That made you feel guilty, huh?
I know, I'm trying to, I'm rubbing it in for trustee Jamal, so. But, but it's okay. You can attend next year, no problem. I also attended the Holocaust exhibit Courage to Remember. The Holocaust survivor, these Holocaust survivors are being told they really need to tell their stories. They're dying out. You know, the Holocaust was 1933 to 1945, and they're dying out, and they're being told they have to tell their stories, so it won't happen again. So if you don't understand history, you're doomed to repeat it, so you really have to study history. So they're told, and it's very hard for them. She told me later that it was very hard for her to tell her story, because it's re, you know, talking about the most terrible, worst time of her life and talking about it again brings it up in her memory again. But she knew she needed to, and she talked about it, and she did a beautiful job. She lived right, she's from Holland, she lived right down the street from Anne Frank, and she was about 10 years old when her parents were taken away from her and murdered, and her whole family was murdered. And she, she hid out in an attic in, in Holland, just down the street from where Anne Frank's attic was, and she was there from age 10 to age 13 or 14, where she was totally by herself, had no friends. They dyed her hair blonde and her hair and her eyebrows blonde, so she wouldn't look Jewish, and she just stayed up there all by herself and fearful of her life for all those years. And then she finally came to this country, and the thing she regretted the most was not being able to go to school. But she, she sent all of her kids to school, all her kids are successful, have successful jobs, are working, get teachers, lawyers, all kinds of really, well, I don't know about lawyers. No, I have two lawyers as sons also, so I can't say anything bad about lawyers. But anyways, but she feels that her contribution to society wasn't her education, but through her kids. So these stories need to be told, and I was really happy that she was able to tell it. The Costa Make, the Costa Rica field studies trip is coming up at Saddleback College, July 29th through August 11th. And I'm planning on going on it as a research biologist. I love to go on fields, biology field studies trips. And trustees have to pay full price. We don't go on these trips out of the country for free, ever. So if any students or staff want to go on this trip with me, please contact Dr. Marcelo Perez and Bruno Passarelli, and they're the ones that are planning this, this field trip to Costa Rica. I wanted to also mention that a former Saddleback College basketball player, his name is Brian Brady, is playing for the Houston Cougars right now, the University of Houston Cougars right now. And he's in the Sweet Sixteen, and he and his team did a 74 to 54, 59 win over my alma mater, Ohio State University. Brady played 60 games at Saddleback College during the 15, 16, and 16, 17 season, and he led the Gauchos to a state title as freshman. Brady chose Ohio to go to school. Brady's from Ohio, excuse me, he's from Ohio, and he chose Saddleback College because he knew it would help him the most and to build himself up, and now it paid off big, and he's going for the Sweet Sixteen, and he's certainly a winner in that field, so watch the Houston Cougars for the former Saddleback College basketball player. And we also love all these stories about our former students and how they succeed, because that means the great work all of our faculty do with our students to ensure that they, they make it in the community. We're very, very proud of them and proud of our former students and students now. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I really don't have anything to report, meaning that I went somewhere. I sent my apologies to President Rothmore, and I just wanted to, wanted to be there, but he understands why I wasn't. I'd like to dovetail two of my colleagues on the, on the board here. One, I'd like to say kudos and repeat everything that trustee Jamal said. I really appreciate the negotiations that we had with faculty, stellar faculty, and stellar administration. I just can't say thank you enough. Being here through many, many, and being on the other side of this wall, protesting and doing what we did just to make a dent, I have to say we've grown up a lot. And now I'd like to dovetail what trustee Penner guess had to say, and I just want to share with you this, I don't know if it's, yes, it's important. When he talked about mental illness, I think it's all of our responsibility to identify it. This morning, we buried my best friend from grade school because of depression, so you can take the rest of the story. And in talking to her, she's out of state two weeks ago, I didn't identify it. It just seemed like the world was, you know, prom queen there for every single, organizing every single reunion that we had, and I've been to a lot of reunions, and to hear six days ago what she did, you just, if you feel like you have a little bit of a clue of hardship going on in someone's life, every day or every other day, maybe you could say, is there anything I can do for you? It's just something simple where they might identify that they have a plan. So I just wanted to say thank you for mentioning that today, because the two girls that apparently committed suicide in Florida, they were the top of their class, they were the life of the party, and sometimes you just don't know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Student trustee Huang.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, condolences to trustee Witt. Mental health is definitely a hot topic these days, and thankfully, to put any action items towards this tragedy, Matt, the president of IVC ASG, who's not here, actually started an ad hoc committee for mental health awareness, as he is a cognitive science major, so definitely steps are being taken and something's being done about it, at least at IVC, which we hope to extend to Saddleback. I just got back from a Russell Spring Break after midterm season, which I would, which I would say was a nightmare, but there's a lot of professors in the room, so it went great. I also just got back from Washington DC from an API leadership conference, which is a part of Annapese. It was an amazing experience, and I can't thank IVC enough for the opportunity. Speaking of, I also just got a scholarship for the Association, American Association of University Women, which is co-run by Dr. Linda Fontenella. I'll be attending a national conference, conference for college women student leaders, so that's another amazing opportunity, just to speak to the opportunities that IVC gives to its students. On March 19th, I also attended the IVC High School Student Parent Transfer Night. It's one of the big nights for the honors program and for the transfer center in general, and it was really nice to talk to and speak to my experience of an Ivy student talking to high school students, because, you know, again, speaking to mental health, one of the biggest things that students always tell me as freshmen is that, you know, they feel shameful or ashamed about going to a community college, and I'm there to say, I mean, just speaking to the two opportunities I mentioned right now, there's so many things, just going to a community college and really honing in on the skills that you have right now and all the opportunities that you have, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have chancellor's report.
I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank the faculty for all of their hard work on negotiations, and very glad that it successfully concluded. So thank you.
Okay, college presidents.
Well, thank you very much. Just two hours ago, I arrived from Sacramento. I had a wonderful opportunity today to be with two of our students and one of their advisors, Professor Meyer. He has not yet returned. I think he probably just landed. But also Professor Titus is a co-advisor, but she, I'll talk about her in a second. So Sarah Wang and Carissa Nyheart made the All California Academic Team with Phi Theta Kappa, the International Honors Society, and so they received their awards for that, and were very, very excited. They got an opportunity to tour the Capitol. I took them through in the morning. The ceremony was at noon time. Then, we learned that right prior to this, over the weekend, there was also a Phi Theta Kappa Regional Meeting, which is all California and Nevada combined, and our students received four awards. Their chapter's called Alpha Omega Mu, and these four hallmark awards were for Distinguished Member Award, and that went to Alessandra Mattes. Distinguished Officer Award, we received two, one Helena Chang, the other Sarah Wong. And then to the second place for Distinguished Theme Award, and this is their, their project, and this in particular went to Sarah for her work on antibiotic intolerance, and so she won second place out of California and Nevada for that. So it was really a very exciting time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. Just one sort of late addition to my written report, and that is to share the pleasure I enjoyed last Thursday of attending graduates from our paramedic program, which is not on our normal semester schedule, as you may know, up in Rancho Santa Margarita, or RSM, as us longtime Orange County residents call it. It was the best of all worlds in seeing what we do really well. It was a program graduation where the faculty spoke to students and students spoke back in their presentations to one another like a family member, and you could see the connections between the program director and the faculty and the students. And that translates to a nearly 100% completion rate for that program. Those connections mean everything in terms of what we do, when we do it well, and we're at our best. At the same time, I looked at that graduating class and realized there was something off with that family, and that is that it was all brothers and no sisters. So we have work yet to do in terms of looking at our access and barriers to that access, but also in our equity gap, so I look forward to doing that work going forward, but wanted to share what was a very positive experience for me with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have ASGs aren't here, so we'll go ahead and do board requests for reports. Seeing none, we'll then move on to our first discussion item, which is the natural pause for those of you that are looking for a way to leave. Yes. So our first discussion item is 4.1, Saddleback College and IVC Foundation's Annual Report. Rowan says hi. Oh, he left. Let's see.
So I, I do have to start with apologies from the, our board president. We, ironically, we often say in our office that we're sharing information in case one of us gets hit by a bus, that the others know about it. She is not here because she is dealing with someone got hit by a truck. So she is dealing with that and apologizes for not being here. So my apologies from Lisa. I do have one request. May I start by sharing the information from this year's Foundation Awards Dinner, or do you want me to dive right into the report?
It's your presentation.
Okay, because this is not in the presentation, because the numbers are not quite finalized. We do still have, some money is still coming in, but as of today, we are over $159,000 gross. Last year, we were at 117,308, so we are up over $42,000, which is a 36% increase. Our net is up as well. It is not up as much. We knew that our expenses were going up this year, as we had to pay for our site, which we didn't have to last year, but our net is over $94,500, and last year it was at $80,281. So we are up about 17%. So needless to say, we're quite happy, and that will translate to more scholarships, more programmatic support, and more opportunities for students. And a huge thank you to everyone who did come and those who didn't, who also supported. So I'm going to move that out of my face. And this is for our 2017-18 year. We once again had a most excellent year. I'm not going to read all of the information, because it is in front of you and, and has been presented. The one thing I will call your attention to, and this is a little bit unusual, is you'll see that our events are listed at $78,036, and you just heard me say that last year we did over 80, over 117 at the Foundation Awards Dinner. We run a program called Pro IVC, which is a matching fund campaign, and our auditors identified this year that we were struggling to show how we were funding Pro IVC through our regular information. So we made an agreement for this year that it was going to be removed from the events line, because the money got transferred into other accounts. We have already identified this is not a great solution, but it was what we could do at the time, so we are working on changing that for next year. So you'll see that throughout the slide. So you'll see that throughout the slide and out the slides, and I will, I won't repeat it as we go along. But that's also when you come to see the numbers for the events, they will add up to far more than 78,000. So our support and revenue for the 17-18 year, as everything is going up, which was very exciting, we did have one extremely large gift, so we're expecting our numbers to go down this year. We did have the $246,000 gift to name the testing center. And that was a one-time gift, although they continue to donate to scholarships and other things. So you can see that we had another really good year, and overall, our net assets were up almost $400,000. There it is again, that our net assets are up. It was a 14.2% increase over last year. And then dollars raised, it was another, again, it was a great jump. It is not quite as huge as it looks, though, if you take out that one-time gift. But needless to say, we're proud of where we are. And we do believe that those donors, we know they have the ability to do that again, so we just need to find the right opportunity. It won't be an annual thing for them, but that was the largest single gift IVC has ever received. So we hope, we know we'll, we will see that again with the right work, which is what we are doing. Our scholarship numbers were at an all-time high for us. We are at 440, almost $446,000, and this is through a multitude of different opportunities. And as you all know, it, the scholarships vary, and are specific based on the donors' requests. So we have for veterans, single parents, you name it, at this point, we have it. And we are obviously off and running with this year's scholarships and are looking forward to another great year. Our endowment, this is an area that I'm especially proud of, as we continue to see our endowments grow. And I report year after year that endowments are my favorite gifts to work on, because they provide income in perpetuity. This is long-term income for our, for, it comes to the foundation, but obviously goes to support the students. And where the growth is, is very healthy year over year. So some of that is interest, but a lot of it is, is new endowments and new gifts. So our significant accomplishments, these are the couple of slides I will read. In new revenue, we had the gift, the $246,000 gift to name the Christopher L. C. Lee Testing Center, $55,000 to support the Veterans Initiative. The Maxwells endowed a second scholarship for $50,000, and that was for our Guardian Scholars or our foster youth. Our net assets increased 14.2%. We did establish three new endowments. We continue, and I know some of them are in this room still, but we continue to see increased participation of faculty, staff, and administrators in our foundation activities, which makes my heart very happy. We increased Astounding Inventions sponsorships from, up 20% from $21,000 to $25,250. And that was with the loss of a $5,000 sponsor last year. We increased the net from the foundation awards dinner 112% last year. So what, this year, we were actually a little concerned that we weren't going to be able to maintain that increase. And not only did we maintain it, we, it went up again. One of the things that we did look at this year was where the money from the foundation goes, what it is supporting. And if you look, our students, our student trustee was talking about her opportunities to go to conferences. And I don't believe hers were paid for through the foundation, but we did pay out 220,000, almost $221,000 went to send students to conferences, almost $25,000 to support our athletic teams. The testing center, the gift came in at 246, we paid out 192. There are salaries, we don't have employees, but our, a couple of departments hire part-time employees and pay it through, pay through the foundation accounts. Supplies and equipment and in-kind contribution. So a lot of people look at the foundation and, and they know that we give scholarships. And this is just, it, it shows that we do, we do a lot more than that, and we're, we're proud of the work we're doing. Then there are other added benefits that people don't think about. So these is kind of the, what else does the foundation do? And we have ongoing student recruitment and retention benefits from scholarships issued to students. We all hear the stories of the students who say, I wouldn't be here if it weren't for the scholarship. I was able to go full-time instead of part-time. I was able to get through all of those benefits. And so we can't prove the exact percentage of students who continue, but we know that the funds paid out through scholarships are making addition, a difference. We have ongoing support provided to instructional programs, student programs, and clubs. We had introduction of IVC to the community through Astounding Inventions, which is coordinated by, by my team. And we bring about 2,000 people to campus every year for that event. Then over the course of the year, volunteers donate about 700 hours of their time. And it's, this is all, you can't quite prove it, but it's valued at about $20,000 of their time. And that doesn't count the board. There are other values assigned to board. And so I always like to end with a quote, and I think that's a familiar face to most of you, if not all of you. And that's Dawn Murphy, and this is a quote from her, her event, from our event last year. And she wrote, she said, "What I want each of you to take away from this evening is that you make life possible for people like me. You enabled a former drug addict and prisoner to change course. And while I love being a student, I cannot wait to join you as a contributor. My success is a direct result of your generous gifts, and I would not be here without you." And I think she eloquently states what a lot of our students feel.
Okay, I had to find the right button. Good evening. My name is Steve Richardson, and I am serving as the interim executive director for the Saddleback College Foundation. In the short time that I have been here, I have already discovered how fortunate the foundation is to have Anthony Ferry, who is co-presenting with me tonight. Anthony has given very strong leadership to the foundation board during his term as president, and he has also led by example in charitable giving to the foundation and encouraging others to do the same. So I would like to introduce Anthony to you at this time.
Thank you, Steve. Very happy to have you here with us. Good evening, members of the board of trustees, chancellor Burke, president Penner guess. Thank you for your time. I want to share just very, very quickly, I've been here a few times before. This is going on my eighth year of involvement with the board as, in different capacities. I've been lucky enough to be able to give back quite a bit over the years and have chosen in my philanthropic interest to focus on education. And so this has been about the most rewarding experience that I've had in, in different philanthropic interests and things. And for me, and just sharing a little bit about why I'm here, not only have I chosen education as a primary focus for me, but I'm also one who prefers to act locally. And for me, as I encourage many, many others, that an investment in community college for you and others in your other local communities, it's about the best investment you can make in your, in your community and the future of that community. And that's why I continue to give and to support this, this community college in general, but specifically here, because I am alumni and a proud, proud Gaucho. So thank you very much for your time and additional support. First, I wanted to open up with, it's been a challenging year for us. We had a lot of different things going on. Predominantly, what affected us the most is a lot of changing of roles and churn in the, in the, in the college. We had a lot of leadership changes within both the district and college. At the president's level, we had, you all know Dawn for about half a year, and then, and then Winnie, we've had, that's for us here in the, as the foundation, we've had three presidents that we've gone through at the college, two were interim, Danny Gregory and Jim, as most of you should recall. And it's created a lot of difficulty for us to get things done and just throwing some curveballs at us here and there. But with that, I'm very, very proud to be presenting what still reflects in positive numbers for us in spite of those challenges. And that would not be possible without our foundation staff. So I'd like to give props to those who are here, of our, our staff and fellow board members for sustaining the momentum and achieving the growth that we have this year. With that, I'll jump right into some, some numbers. I won't recite every one of them, but just to summarize, at the top, 143,000 raised in fiscal 17-18 through different grants to fund various different initiatives, as you can see there, from veterans, nursing, our STEM success, as well as a significant grant, the Edison Grant, providing 2023 free tutoring sessions for STEM students. So very happy to see that. We also, not to jump right down to the bottom, but a pretty significant bequest from an emeritus student, $630,000. So very, very significant bequest there that I wanted to, to point out. Jumping forward. So our income for 17-18 as follows, you can see the, the breakdown there. Contributions is equal to our, our donations, and that's what's reflected there. Our revenue of investment income, realized and unrealized gain, in-kind donations, and, and sales from different things, the other plant sales from horticulture and fine arts, sales as well, rounding out the, the revenue numbers. Our events, a successful gala once again last year, fine arts fundraisers, our golf event, and fashion show, rounding out the, the big events contributors to that slice of the pie. And additional district support from our executive director and senior accounting specialist and other admin support in district, rounding out that total income of 3.3 for the year. Our current financial position, this is audited, so numbers you've probably seen before. Hopefully, I'm not surprising anyone with these. As you can see, your total revenue again at the top, 3.3. Expenses totaling 2.4, leading to a net changes of assets of 846,000. To recap and to total this, while we raised 3.3 million in total support revenue, this was with, with that increase in, in net. So those are the, the numbers that round things out. And with that, I'm going to pass baton back to Steve for a minute.
All right. Thank you, Anthony. I'm going to run you through some financial slides here. And so the first slide here is our net assets. And as you can see, the foundation's net assets continue to increase year after year. Last year was an 8.7 increase to over 10 and a half million in managed assets, which is the largest increase since the 13-14 fiscal year. And then on this following slide shows the dollars raised. And you're going to see that the dollars raised averages over $2 million, with the exception of the 16-17 fiscal year. And so the explanation for that is actually quite simple. There were some significant major one-time gifts that were received in 13-14, 14-15, 15-16, and 17-18. The dip that we see in 16-17 is simply because that was a year in which there were no major one-time gifts. The great news is that 17-18 resumed that trend of significant major gifts received by the foundation. And then turning to scholarships, you'll notice the same sort of pattern, that scholarships have averaged just well over $500,000, and this year, 514, $781. That reflects giving out 802 scholarships, which was actually a 24% increase over the 16-17 year. So you obviously see the dip in scholarship dollars in 16-17, and that correlates very specifically with the dip in revenue on the preceding slide. And then on endowments, I have always said about foundations that you can judge the health of a foundation by the steady growth of endowment and managed assets. And here you see for the last five years, a very steady growth for the foundation in the endowments that is securing and growing at that rate. And so, once again, it just speaks to some great health in the foundation, and these are very positive numbers. So I'm going to hand it back over to Anthony.
Thank you, Steve. So as a recap summary, kind of as our, our return investment as a, as a foundation, very proud to say we're nearing about $2 million of total benefit back to the, back to the college in one of many of the different forms you see here, whether in the, the foundation-supported salaries that come from the foundation, the scholarships that are supported, in-kind donations, and the list goes on, totaling, as you can see, near $2 million. So very, very happy to be part of that and bringing back a number that I hope will crack 2 million as we move forward as continued support and benefit back to, back to the college. So a very, very healthy ROI for a foundation. With that, just like to remind you all why we, why we do this, certainly why I do this, some of the faces that we truly are making a difference for, and as we've heard in the past, that, you know, it's, it's very hard to quantify who may or may not be here as a result of our efforts, but I'd like to think that there's a whole lot of them that are here because of our efforts and that will move forward to be fantastic community, contributing members of our society and our local community in the, in the near future. So with that, they'd like to thank you. I'd like to thank them. I'd like to thank you as well for your support, as well as many in the room here, as I know share my passion for the college and the students and investing in our future. So with that, I'd like to wrap it up. And one more thanks for helping us change lives of a lot of people.
Thank you very much. Looks like I have a request to speak from trustee Milchek.
Well, first of all, I want to sincerely thank Anthony. I know you've worked for our foundation for many years, heading our foundation. And also Steve, really, we want to sincerely thank you for all the work you've done in raising $2 million for, for our students. And I know, I'm in a number of organizations that donate scholarships to, to our students. And just, you know, when you have to choose which students you're giving the scholarship to, it's, it's very, very daunting, because there's, you want to give it to everyone, you know? So it's, it's really a challenge. And I just want to also say that I understand now, they, the policy is to allow different organizations to be able to select the, you know, they get forwarded, the, the people that, that the, that our colleges feel should get the scholarships. And then the, the organizations can pick out the, the final scholarship winners. I believe that's the truth going on right now. Is that, is that what's happening right now? And people are very happy about that, in my understanding.
Yeah, there was some misunderstanding, as I mentioned, some of the confusion we had through last year, but I think we've nailed it down as to where we can have those donors participate in the selection and still making sure that we're doing everything by the, by the books and by the law per the IRS code. And so we're, we're very happy to have them participating again.
Yeah, so some of the people are going to take their scholarships elsewhere. They're, they're very upset about it. Now, they've come back and they're, they're ready to give the scholarships to our students, but go by the law and go by the code and make sure that everything is by the law. So also, I, I just, this is a question for Alyssa Oransky. I remember when the Lees came here and they were talking about how they had donated this really significant scholarship in memory of their son, I think it was, to, to, to IVC. How did you determine how much it would cost to, to have a naming right for something, like, like a testing center or something like that? Is that, do you have something like that in code? Or do you determine that as, as you go? I'm just wondering how that, how that works.
So that's actually something we've been working on this year. Erin and I met with Anne Marie to create a new board policy, because it didn't, we didn't have anything that went into enough detail. I, the way the process worked is that they figured out how much it was going to cost to build out the testing center and put in all of the equipment they need to make it the best test, testing center around. They gave that number to the donors. The, I was actually out of state when this happened, but they came here, they spoke, and my understanding is it was approved by the board to, for them to be able to name the testing center. So that really is not how the process is going to work moving forward, but that's how it happened about a year and a half ago now. So we hope to have that problem again in the near future.
You know, because I'm sure there might be, we've talked about having naming rights for some of our buildings as well. And certainly, that's something we need to discuss and determine how much, how much the donation needs to be for putting your name on top of one of our major buildings at Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College. And, and if you, I've gone, I'm in a number of organizations that raises money for scholarships, as you know. And it's, it's so heartening to have these students come to the meetings at the end of the year and talk about how the scholarships gave them hope and, and gave them the money to be able to go through school and gave them the feeling that somebody cares about them and, and allowed them to finish school. And, and these students are just struggling to make ends meet, and it's really wonderful that we're, that we're doing, raising scholarships for these students. So thanks.
Trustee Jamal.
Okay, so I have a few questions. Some relate to what trustee Milchek are worth asking about. And Anthony, thank you for what you do. You're the volunteer up there. And I know you've been involved for a number of years and really appreciate your contributions to the foundation. And I'm very supportive of both foundations. Steve, welcome. How long are you going to be around? And I, I mean, I've asked that question before. Awkward. How long are you going to be with us?
I will, I will tell you what I told everybody at the front. I said, I'll make a commitment to three or four months for you to be able to do a search and, and find. and find someone new.
Great. So my first question is for Dr. Stern. When do we expect an announcement on the next executive director?
Within a few weeks.
Few weeks?
Yes, we're in the final stages.
Okay. Great. Back to you guys. So to transition or dovetail on what trustee Milchker was saying, so we have on the board agenda this evening a new naming rights policy for review and study. So if it is approved, and have you both had a chance to look at it, Steve and Alyssa?
No, I have not.
Okay, Alyssa, so if it's approved as is next month, how would that, will that help the foundations' increased donations, contributions?
I don't know that it will help us increase our donations so much as it will give us guidance as we go to look for naming opportunities. We are still, I would say we're still in that building phase in that we, we're still educating people that we do accept gifts for things other than scholarships. I know that that's still a surprise for people who are very active with the foundation and who are donors. So we're educating them that we do other things and I think we are getting to that point that yes, we'll have more.
So how can we get there faster?
Hire more people. The more people we have out there, the more people we're going to be able to talk to. Ultimately, that's not the answer, it's a process. And we, one of the things we've done at IVC and they do it at Saddleback as well is we're engaging our community members and we're working with our board members as much as possible.
How many naming rights policies are out there right now outstanding in the community that we've offered? Zero?
Not for buildings, for scholarships, yes, for buildings.
For naming rights, specifically naming rights, new and existing buildings.
How many are out there waiting?
Yeah, I mean, how many are pending?
None. On my part, I don't.
Okay, so how can we have growth if we don't offer it?
Well.
I can, I can respond from past experience, not this experience. I was the executive director at the Surius College Foundation for 18 and a half years and they went through two major bonds to build buildings because they had to go out for public bonds. And so most of the naming opportunities, which we had were few, were mostly not buildings but for interior of buildings and most of those relationships for any naming opportunity varied between 12 months and 24 months to secure and to go through all the processes and to make certain that the dollars were then distributed appropriately between the district programs, the foundation and for all those things. But normally it was about a 12 to 24 months cultivation.
Yeah, and I'm not, I didn't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot too much, Alyssa. I mean, because I want, we want to be helpful and so when I heard you say, you know, we're in the process of approving a new board policy and here it's not going to make any difference, then, I mean, it makes me think, what else do we need to do?
Well, I don't think it's going to impact us immediately. Part of what needs to be considered is that where we were and where we've come and the work we've had to do to get to this point, it's no secret that the IVC Foundation was not in great shape when I came in and a lot of bridges had been burned. A lot of people were not, they're giving us test gifts now. We needed to make friends first and one of the things I think we saw at this year's event, at this year's foundation awards dinner, is we really transitioned from it being a friend raiser to it being a fundraiser. You know, we had the same number of people in the room the last two years and the overall amount of money we raised went up 35%. We're taking the steps that we need to get there but we don't have those prospects yet. Our big donors, major gift donors are still around the $5,000 level. We have a few that are coming in, you know, the family who named the testing center, the Maxwells have named two endowed scholarships. They have the capacity, there are others as well and we're getting calls now. I had a really fascinating donor meeting last week where they've lived in Irvine, they know one of our faculty members, they called, they're giving us $10,000 over, for the next two years, so 20,000 total as a test. If that goes well, there's a lot more to be had. So we're making those steps but it is, it's a process. Major gifts don't.
So is the path, and this for Anthony too, is the path to major gifts, what is that pathway? Maybe it's, you're saying it's maybe not through naming rights, what is the pathway to get more major gifts?
It's what the donor's interested in. So for some it is scholarships, for some it's to name programs, to endow programs, to endow professorships, to, I don't see, feel free to jump in and add, I know the interim guy but.
Yeah, I love being the interim guy, absolutely.
Playing with house money.
Am I? Major gifts at community colleges are a perennial challenge because you're combating the fact that tuition is low, you usually build foundations on annual scholarship giving, which are much lower as amounts. And so to cultivate givers, to think in larger terms and to make those type of major gifts take significant time. And I don't know the history here of what type of time has been invested in cultivating those types of prospect lists, but you have to begin with a prospect list and once you get the list together, it's a 12 to 24 month. And we normally think of a major gift as anything of $25,000 or greater would be my definition of a major gift. And so my experience with that is that you can build on your annual fund, you can cultivate those givers to be interested, you can have corporate partners that are interested in your workforce development or your CTE programs that are willing to partner. There's a lot of mutual benefit that usually needs to be derived from major gift donors.
I'll make a couple, this is personal recommendations, I'm not familiar with what's on the agenda for approval.
What's review and study tonight and if it stands, it'll be on next month's agenda for final approval.
So I think that the opportunity for naming rights across both colleges is a significant opportunity for us to increase giving opportunities. Certainly it's attractive to major donors to see their name in lights on the side of the building. Since we're new to it, both colleges, what I'd suggest that it be, whatever, be approved with some understanding of flexibility since we're not going to nail the numbers right out of the chute and so we'll want the flexibility to be able to entertain naming opportunities or offers from potential donors now or in the future. I think the best thing that we could get from the district and college to the foundations, this is a fantastic option for the foundation members to have as they're out there cultivating donors. The best thing we could get is guidance to know the types of things there's consideration to name. We don't want to go out there offering to name a seed or a door or a window and so giving guidance as to the types of things we should be talking about. And then again, guidance if not minimums on what those, we think those things should be. If we throw out some really big numbers, again, we don't really have a, especially, you know, IVC is, as Alyssa just mentioned, we don't have a lot of very significant mature donors, they may not be there yet. And my last suggestion would be, don't give anyone names forever. Time box, any naming.
So if you could, I know you got a lot of things going on, take a look at the proposed policy for, that's up for review and study and let us know, you know, any comments you have.
Sure, will do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, trustee Jay.
I want to thank Alyssa and Anthony for doing such a wonderful job. You guys are the greatest. We really appreciate all the hard work you do. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more requests to speak, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have 4.2 state and federal legislative priorities being presented by Letitia Clark.
Good evening, honorable trustees. Again, my name's Letitia Clark. I've been serving as the district director of public affairs and government relations since November and it's been an honor to serve in that role thus far. I come to you this evening to present a list of legislative priorities to consider and as you know, we are in session at the state and federal level. Doing this with the absence of a legislative committee will help staff navigate with our lobbyists, capital advocacy partners and strategic education services to support or oppose legislation as it moves through the session and you setting priorities helps us navigate through that process a little easier. It also can empower any staff that make trips to Sacramento or DC with some documentation. I provided a draft kind of handout that we could give to staff or faculty if they're traveling to DC or Sacramento to help them understand what your priorities are and what we're focusing on so that their talking points are a little more tailored as they complete these visits. So just so you know kind of what we've been following on the state level during the session thus far has been the clinical placements for nursing students, financial aid and college affordability, capital outlay for college facilities, bills that protect and expand dual enrollment and also bills that address non-academic barriers for students. And at the federal level, we're looking at a lot of bills that may deal with deferred action for childhood arrival or DACA, workforce for 21st century, higher education act reauthorization, which you've dealt with a lot, I know, in the past, veterans affairs of course and apprenticeships. So far, on February 22nd, that's for the state level at least, that's where all the bills needed to be introduced. So now we have a lot of numbers for bills such as item 6870 was, at that point in time when I did this presentation, was just a spot bill. We helped get a spot bill or a placeholder essentially at the state level to address, and I'm sorry, I put community college capital outlay. That should be also, also, I'm sorry, Senator Roth has a bill that's SB 700 and that's dealing with the nursing placement, but the item is an example of a spot bill. So now a lot of these have numbers and we're ready to either support or oppose with an official letter and so adopting some of these priorities this evening will help us moving forward in writing additional letters of support or opposition. I'm just some pictures for you all to see that we've already had a lot of activity so far. In December last year, Anne Marie doesn't like this picture, we were already advocating for some of the capital outlay projects. We all went to the CCLC conference, many of us, met with several legislators and you all reported on those meetings and they were really productive. Trustee Tim Jamal met with several of our representatives and their staff and I know trustee Prendergast, President Prendergast was just there and this is a picture of our veterans affairs staff here at Saddleback going to DC as well. And so we know that different constituencies and different groups, they make these trips for their students or different organizations that they may be involved with, even our student trustee, she was just in Sacramento or is going to Sacramento or DC and with Glenn Rockmore just being in Sacramento, we know that we have staff and different representatives in these places where legislators will be and so it's a great opportunity to pull them aside or get a meeting if possible, but if we have these legislative priorities, it just helps us advocate for these points a little bit stronger and it strengthens our message moving forward. Just so you know, we also have upcoming advocacy trips. We always talked about President Prendergast's trip and even at the local level, we are visiting every city council just about throughout our service area to, and we've asked them to present a proclamation to recognize Community College Awareness Month and so that just gives us more face time with our local elected officials. The student leaders of each school have also asked me about opportunities for student advocacy. There are many opportunities to advocate, especially for college affordability and so we hope that we might be able to plan something with them in April or May. And the dean of nursing, Diane, she was just in Sacramento advocating on behalf of SB 700 and I expect for her to go back to Sacramento along with her staff to continue to advocate that as it moves through the senate, education, higher education committee as well as BNP and so we'll see them in Sacramento I'm sure throughout the session. And of course we have the local education, Orange County Legislative Task Force where trustee Milchker serves on that and the chancellor and I attend as well and that's a monthly meeting where we get updates on legislative activities. So again, having the priorities that are before you will just help us strengthen our message and make everything that we do a little more efficient and effective at the state and local level. So I'm here to answer any questions and I hope that you'll strongly consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
Thank you, Letitia.
Sure.
Great presentation. What is the status or what is your, what is the prognosis for AB2 and passage through the legislature?
Uh, yeah, AB2.
The second-year college?
Yes.
Free college?
It seems to have strong bipartisan support actually and so I haven't received a current update of it being blocked in any way but I know that they've received support just about from every community college district across the state.
So we think there's a good chance it's going to get passed and signed into law by Governor Newsom?
We have to see how it goes through committee.
It's actually in the budget. It's already been budgeted, so.
So may revise if nothing changes and may revise.
Right, but the legislature hasn't passed the budget yet.
So if nothing changes, by may revise, it'll, very strong possibility that it'll be funded. But support letters are still really important, so we've already sent our support letter for that and we did that very early.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't talk about the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force meeting because I ran out of time at my board report, but.
How is that possible?
I know, I was watching the time and I said I've got a credit, so I left that out. But what I was going to say is we're working. We're working to assist our nursing program on AB 700 and there were 2,500 bills introduced at the state level of which approximately 600 of these bills potentially have direct effect on community colleges and many of these bills focus on financial aid. So sifting through these 600 community college bills out of 2,500 bills that were interested in legislators is like a lot of work, you know? So how do we know which bills our board wants to support? Do we need a board committee? I mean, I hate to say more committees and more meetings because nobody wants more meetings but how do we determine which bills are the most important for us to support? Anyway, that's something we need to think about, I'm not asking for answers now, but maybe we do need a subcommittee of the board to do legislative issues, to study legislative issues, something to think about anyway.
So trustee Milchker, I mean, great question and I think that's kind of why we decided at this point it might be great to, for you to pass a legislative priority that allows you to have a broad overview of the areas that we're going to focus on and then that allows the chancellor and I to work with our lobbyists so that they can pinpoint which bills kind of fall into those categories. So rather than us sifting through the 2,500 bills as you mentioned, they can kind of let us know which bills fall under these categories and then we can move forward in opposing it or supporting it and they do that anyway. This just allows us to have a stronger idea of what your priorities are and again, it will empower any staff that happen to be in Sacramento or DC with the priorities that you've set forth and it'll be in a clear succinct document that they can even pass on to the legislators.
So how are you, how are you suggesting that we let you know what our priorities are? The seven-member board agreeing on these particular priorities to be, that we could have the task force work on, that we could have you work on and the chancellor work on, any of us could go to Washington DC or Sacramento and support these bills and support these areas?
Yeah, if it's without, I'm sorry, if it's outside of kind of what we've, if you've looked at the attachment, it has a few items listed. If it's outside of that, you all can always let us know if there's something that you want us to get behind and put some energy behind. Without you letting us know though, this just allows us to move forward and make sure that we're narrowly focused on the priorities and this has come from what we've discussed at the Legislative Task Force, what we discussed with our lobbyists and then kind of what we've heard on the dais from you during the session thus far.
Okay. Also, we met with seven legislators when we were up in Sacramento and that was a really great job and we, we did a lot of running around to meet with all seven legislators and it was really, really valuable and it was a really good thing that we did that. So thank you.
Thanks for setting that up.
Thank you. Seeing no more requests to speak. I will say again, thank you very much for that information packet that you put together for me to have so that I sounded like I knew what I was talking about in DC. The, again, I'm sure Amanda's gotten ahold of you already about some of the things we learned that we can pass on to the presidents and the chancellor and I believe we're going to try and put together some sort of a report on that as well that I will be happy to help with, so thank you again.
Perfect. And if I could just make one more request, if there are any other trustees going up to Sacramento or DC moving forward. Sacramento or DC moving forward, I would just ask that you always invite legislators to come back and visit our district.
Right.
They always appreciate that invitation, and I think Congressman Levin just accepted an invitation from one of our staff, so he'll be visiting Saddleback soon. It's always a pleasure to have a representative here on one of the campuses.
And I should have mentioned, I'll talk to you and the chancellor about it, I did speak briefly with Congressman Ruda's staff, and I think they're interested in doing a site visit, so I'll follow up on that.
Wonderful.
He's the new elected member of Congress for coastal area, Laguna Beach, Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, some of our service area.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, they were all on recess when I was there, so.
As part of Letitia's presentation, there is an exhibit in here that has the priorities and areas of focus. So if you could look that over this month, that talks about the issues that have been coming up this year. So the clinical placements, financial aid and college affordability, facilities and so forth. If the board wished to adopt this as our guiding document, then when we get requests for letters very quickly, Letitia and I can move forward with that, rather than, because oftentimes, we don't have time to come to the full board for, and if you wanted to add to these, we could do that as well.
This is coming to us next month as an item?
If that's what you would like to do, to formally adopt it, we could consider this to be your opportunity to review it and then make any, send us any comments, and then we can bring it back for actually a formal vote, so that its direction.
It's attachment.
Its direction to us on what are your priorities.
Put together all the priorities for state.
I have to say, I like that.
My understanding of the process we have in the absence of a Legislative Affairs Committee, which, you know, I think that's what you're kind of hinting at, a lot of public agencies do have a Legislative Affairs Committee, we don't, but in the absence of it, my understanding is when issues come up that are timely, that you or Letitia share the, run the issue by the board president, and then the board president, at his or her discretion, decides, yes, let's do it, I think I have a sense of the board, or if he or she does not, then hold off, we need a board discussion. That's the current policy, right?
But I think the idea of.
It's not a policy.
The idea of adopting legislative priorities as a full board is it gives, it also gives direction not only to Letitia and to me, but also to the board president of the areas that you are interested in, in a formal way, and then we can also, we can take that document when we go on legislative visits to inform legislators what our priorities are.
So I'd be in favor of bringing it back as an agenda item to adopt.
Yeah, I think, I think at this point, the suggestion is considered a review and study item for coming back to us next month.
Next month for adoption.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we have our consent calendar. I will be pulling 5.2 and 5.13. Do I have any other polls?
Yes, 512, 5.12.
5.12. Any other polls? So at this point, I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar, which I have from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Jay. Have any requests to speak on the balance of the consent items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have, then we'll start with 5.12. I pulled that, this is the resolution on Mr. Jack Roper, the first superintendent and Saddleback College president. We've all signed said resolution, so I just wanted to take a moment to point out the importance of that and how nice it is that we put this together, especially in commemoration of the 50th anniversary. And so, do I, what's that? Yeah, I'll go ahead and read all the whereas. So, whereas the South Orange County Community College District was established in 1967, and Mr. Jack Roper was appointed to the offices of the superintendent and president of the district and Saddleback College for the period of September 1976 through July 1968, making him the first superintendent and president in SOCCCD history. And whereas Mr. Roper served, actually, is he, are you supposed to be reading this?
Yeah, but you can, he's the clerk.
He's the clerk.
You're fine.
All right, okay.
They can summarize.
They gave it to me. Mr. Roper served a newly formed district and college with diligent and outstanding leadership, greatly responsible for its success, and he established a strong foundation built upon for 51 years. And whereas SOCCCD today is one of the largest community college districts in the region, serving approximately 43,000 students on three campuses, Saddleback College, Orion Valley College, and Advanced Technology and Education Park, and provides outstanding education through more than 400 degree and certificate programs that prepare students to fill local and high-skilled workforce opportunities. And whereas SOCCCD is thankful and proud of Mr. Roper's legacy of leadership that assured our community college district remain one of outstanding higher learning, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District extends its profound appreciation and commendation for the latest lasting leadership of Jack Roper, who immensely contributed to the long-term success of students, faculty, and staff within the South Orange County Community College District. And again, all signed. So if I can get a. Where is this? Mails, okay. And so I have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call since it's a resolution? No, okay. So a motion from trustee Milchker and a second from trustee Wright.
I doubt it.
So we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee would be here, right?
You know, unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you very much. Moving on from there, trustee Jay, you've pulled 5.12, which is purchase orders and checks.
So it's for, a question for Anne Marie Gable, because she's the one that submitted it. It's Exhibit B, it says access control security system project, board approves 62519. Is that a typo?
No, the board approved the project on June 25th of 2019, and so what we're doing and.
We haven't gotten to June 25th.
We haven't gotten to 19.
Oh, yes.
That's my question. So it has to be 18?
Correct.
Okay, that's all.
Sorry.
Okay, that's all.
So I have a motion to approve as corrected and a second from trustee Jay. So a motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jay, as corrected. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. A unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. With that, 5.13, I'm pulling for corrections. We have, so before taking action, the correction for the header section should read contracts with values between 5,000 and 200,000. It erroneously lists 100,000 instead of 200,000. So you might want to make a note of that before you vote on it. Also on page four, Blackbowed, Inc., for 22,850 is for the Saddleback College Foundation, not, as it is erroneously listed, for the IVC Foundation. So you want to make those corrections in notes before we vote as well. Those are the only corrections to that item. Trustee Lang has made the motion. Trustee Jay has seconded. So with that, seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Thank you. All right, so we have unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Moving on to general action items, first one being the CCT Board of Director election. Just a reminder that this is, I believe, seven positions available. There are four what are considered open seats, where the incumbent has turned out. Oh, wait, no, this says.
There's 13 nominees here.
Just two vacancies due to three term limit and two trustees not seeking reelection, so it's not because they turned out, but yeah, there's, so essentially four open seats that don't have any incumbents running for them.
We can vote for seven.
And you can vote for up to seven of the 13. I don't know if I have to recuse myself from this vote or not, because I'm on it.
You don't have to recuse, but does someone have a slate to nominate?
Looks like trustee Witt has a request to speak.
Can we, I like to recommend that we use our seven votes to vote for the second candidate.
But you can't do that.
You can't do that.
Why, we did it before.
Because they never would do that from their boards.
No, we did that before. We used all our votes.
There's one vote for the board.
One way for the board.
The board gets one vote.
You vote for seven people.
And can vote for up to seven.
So you recommend a group of people to vote for. What yours, the way you stated it, what you're recommending is that we just bullet vote for one person, which you're allowed to do, but it's not.
She didn't say that. She wanted to cast all seven votes to count for you.
That you clearly can't do.
You can't do that.
But she could say she only wants to vote for one person.
That's, yes.
Yes, she could recommend a slate.
That's what I understood her to say.
Oh, I thought you meant seven votes.
Well, that'd be great, too, but.
But no, I think, I think it's proper etiquette to probably vote for more than just one person, because it, I mean, there's 72 districts, and if, I mean, you can do what you want, it's your motion, but it's, it's.
I mean, I think you, we've had board members in the past, I don't recall us doing that, voting, having only, voting for only one person.
I think we might have.
Really?
David?
Last year we did, we just had, we. We picked seven.
We took seven.
Yes, last year. David, do you remember?
Oh, yeah?
I intend to cast one vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Well. Jim, did you?
Yeah, I. You were asking, I, I, I read through them this afternoon. Number two I'd like to vote for, number four, five, and 11. Two, four, five, and 11. And then six, nine, no, six, seven, and nine.
Two, four, five, 11, what was the other one?
Six, nine, six, seven, nine, sorry.
Could we get names?
Well, two is myself.
Right.
Four is Kenneth A. Brown from El Camino. Five is Sally Biggins from Redwoods. Those are both incumbents. Six is Greg Bonacorsi from Aloney. Seven is Mark Evesizer from Palomar. Nine is Michael, or I'm sorry, Michelle Jenkins from Santa Clara, Rita. And 11 is Linda Wa from Pasadena. So that would be our, that would be seven, if you're nominating that slate.
If one person's voted for seven people, that means the board is choosing, has to choose all seven people.
Well, it depends on the motion. The motion, so trustee Lang could make a motion, and trustee Witt made, kind of made a motion to say they want to vote for one person.
Okay.
And then we can either vote that yes or no. If we say no, then we're asking, we want to do more than one. If, if it, seven is no, then we're looking for a slate of maybe four. It varies.
Okay.
But the vote, the motion and the vote would have to be on the slate, right? So the slate is a philosophical discussion in and of itself. Do you bullet vote, or do you vote for seven, like you're kind of supposed to do?
You don't have to vote for seven.
You don't have to.
We could, we could not.
You could do four.
Or we could propose seven. What I, sorry.
What I'm hearing. Somewhere in between. Yeah, it seems like trustee Lang and trustee Witt want to propose one.
Well, I'm certainly willing to make that motion.
And I. Can I make an observation?
Yes, please.
Since I've been out there campaigning for you. The voting takes place from March 11th through April 25th. And so there will be other boards looking to see who's been voting for whom, and it takes, it's going to take about, I estimate, I've actually run for the Triple CT Board and did not win. It's gonna take about 20 to 25 votes out of the 72 to win. So if you're voting at the end of March, and there's another month for votes, I would personally encourage you to, and it is totally your decision, I would encourage you to vote for more than one person, even though I understand the theory of bullet voting.
It's not.
And.
Other districts would look at that and go, well, that wasn't cool, and then.
It could actually, it could actually harm what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
You could, you could have a opposite reaction.
Well, I'd like to vote for three people, you know, so.
Which three?
The three I like are Thomas J. Pendergast from South Orange County Community College District, Michelle Jenkins, just because I've known her for a gazillion years, even though she's served longer than I have, but anyway, and Linda Wa from Pasadena, Community College District, those three.
Well, I guess I'll go ahead and chime in. I would support Kenneth Brown, because I've known him for a while. I would support Mark Evesizer and Linda Wa as well.
Yes.
Those, those are people I know and have talked to.
Yeah, I just nominated the people I know and I've talked to, too, those, you know, I know those three people.
So why don't you just combine what you, the two of you just said? It'll be fine.
So what is that? Did you figure that out?
No, I lost, I heard two.
TJ.
So two.
11.
Four.
And 11.
11.
Marsha.
And seven, so two, four, seven, 11, that would be four votes.
Right.
Oh, that would be okay.
But you had, I thought you wanted one.
I said seven.
Okay.
Yeah, seven, I agreed with trustee Wright's two, four, seven, and 11.
I'd go along with that, it's okay.
She has a motion, Marsha.
So Marsha, you have the motion on the floor, looks like, because you hit your button first. Do I have a second to that motion if that's the one you're making?
Yeah, that's the motion I'm making, so.
Two, four, seven, and 11.
So I took off one of the people I voted for and put on two people you voted for to kind of be flexible.
Oh, you said one other?
I said Michelle Jenkins.
Oh, that can be your motion, too.
But wait.
I didn't, I didn't, I was just saying the people I knew. So if you want to put someone you know as number nine, then that's your motion.
But that, that would be five people. Well, wait, wait.
It's still better than.
It's better than one.
Okay, okay, so I'll make that motion then, okay?
So two, four, seven, nine, and 11 is the motion?
Okay.
Okay, and I have a second from trustee Wright, is that okay with you?
Yes.
On the change? All right, so trustee Witt, are you still wanting to speak, or was that to, earlier? Trustee Wright, that was earlier?
Well, yes, I've already spoken.
All right, so seeing no more other requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to nominate myself, Kenneth Brown, Mark Evesizer, Michelle Jenkins, and Linda Wa for the CCT Board. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you very much for your support.
Good.
See what happens. See what happens.
Good luck.
All right, so I think that acknowledges, I think from my, from my polling research, I've got three votes.
And some people say you need to re, you need to run two years in a row to win, that's what they say.
I ran once before, so we'll see.
Okay.
Okay, so 6.2, we have the OCSBA Maureen DeMarco Award nomination. We had asked at the last meeting if anybody had any suggestions, because of the nature of the award, and looks like we have a, an excellent candidate there. We have Robert Flornoy, IVC classified employee, and you can see the details of why he was nominated. I have a motion from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Milchker, and a request to speak from trustee Witt. I have a motion from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Milchker, and a request to speak from trustee Witt.
I would like to say thank you to Grace. It was um, put together very well. I enjoyed reading it. You did this work, right?
Just take credit for it.
You didn't? Contact, who did it?
It was Maria Nunez, who's not here.
Will you then extend my appreciation, because I know this takes time, it does, writing recommendation letters and. Pretty neat guy.
Yeah. I think he's got a great chance. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and no more requests to speak. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote and a trustee, student trustee advisory yes vote. Six point three, OCSBA Board of Directors Interest Form. And here we have.
It would be you, TJ.
They have what I've been doing, but I would certainly entertain the idea of somebody else doing it. Trustee Jamal has done it in the past.
I've done it for thirty years. I don't wanna do it again.
Okay, we have a motion from trustee Witt.
What's the motion?
What's the motion?
To nominate TJ for, for the uh.
Are you speaking for her?
Unless you wanna do it.
No, I want you to get the blame.
Okay. Uh, I don't have a second.
No, we'd like to have TJ do it.
Uh, second from trustee Jamal and a request, no, not a request to speak from trustee Jamal. Nobody else wanted to do it, huh? Alright. Go ahead.
Aren't you on the board right now?
I'm on it right now.
Yeah, so when does your term end?
I don't, I don't know if it necessarily, there's no term limit on it as far as I'm aware. Uh, but the reason it's up is because the term is ending.
Okay, alright.
And trustee Wright is on the election committee, I believe. So he's already serving in a capacity, which I have done that job as well.
Alright.
Alright, go ahead and vote on the item. Okay, we have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point four, request to change local district election system. So we have a resolution uh, that I will read out um, a little more briefly than what's written. Just to have an idea for the public to know what's going on. Uh, if we pass this, then it will require my signature as well as trustee Wright's. So this is a resolution initiating the process of establishing trustee areas and elections by trustee area. So essentially, we presently must live in one of seven areas to run as trustee. But we campaign and uh, basically try and reach at large the entire district. What we're looking to do instead is to live in one of the seven areas, but only have to run in those, in the area that you serve. That's the simplification of it. This uh, satisfies California Voting Rights Act of two thousand and one. California Elections Code fourteen oh two five, also known as the CVRA. And it is. Something we had talked about and are now acting on. I have a motion to approve from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Wright. And your request to speak. And just for clarification too, this is looking to be implemented for the election in twenty twenty-two. After we get data from the twenty twenty census. And draw, if necessary, new boundaries. Trustee Jamal.
So i- is it our intent um, to have a public process to bring in? Members of the community to speak um, on this transition if it is, if we vote to approve this resolution? Because one of, one of the whereas is does include a clause that says. We will have a deliberate, careful, and public process for establishing, establishing trustee areas. So if that is included in the resolution, the, if this vote occurs in a few seconds. Does that constitute a careful, deliberate, public process? Or do we have to engage in um, asking members of the community to come um, and address us on this issue?
It is my understanding that you did that a number of years ago, perhaps back in twenty ten, twenty eleven. And it, what this, we would have to do that after we have the results of the twenty twenty census. You would have to relook at the, at the board, at the boundaries.
It was one of the first things that we did when I was in on twenty eleven. Is we got maps and they showed the data of how many people were in each area. And there were some movements of boundaries, but not dramatic. And it took into account shifts in population change. Um, it's done by an independent council. We could, if we really wanted to, you could have more than one map suggestion. And let public have input on it, but because we're already by areas and if they don't change dramatically, I don't know why we would need to do that necessarily.
I think what they're looking for is, is great populat- population shifts to make sure that each trustee has about the same number of constituents.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think if you look at the two thousand and ten map and compare it to the two thousand and eleven that we voted on. Trustee Wright's district expanded west a little bit from where it had been. Because there was growth in that section and it kinda cut away from trustee Lang's a little bit, but he still had the same number. Based on the increase of population within Irvine itself. So that, and again, it's done by an independent body, so.
The areas that grew in population um, would probably shrink and the areas that are static would stay about the same.
Something like that.
Something like that.
So. That answer your question?
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point five, Saddleback College Community Education Emeritus Institute and K twelve partnership facility use agreement. With Saddleback Valley Unified. I have a motion from trustee Lang. Second from trustee Milchker and a request to speak from trustee Witt.
If you look at status, um, about how many hours per week are we talking about that a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars? Cause it jumped from, if I remember forty, yeah, uh, forty thousand per year. From two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So now it's not tripled, but it's more than doubled, two and a half times.
Yep, almost tripled. Um, so if I can address that, uh, so under AB eighty, eighty-six, we had a partnership originally with S, SVU, SD. Uh, and now that partnership is turned into a handoff. So we are completely handling the adult education program. So with that, we have gains in FTS, but as a result of that, we now, now have to pay at arm's length for that facility use agreement. So that's why our cost is nearly tripling uh, relative to the previous three years for the next five years.
Okay, thank you, makes sense, yeah.
Okay, seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point six, authorized purchase of furniture at Saddleback College National Office Furniture, Inc. A motion from trustee Jay, a second from trustee Witt. And request to speak from trustee Lang.
Of what the need was here in terms of dollars, uh, what kind of a budget impact uh, this might have.
So it, we're trying to be proactive here and get authority to use this piggybackable bid. And so that way, when we do have the need come up, we will be issuing the purchase orders and the purchase orders will come to the board.
Okay, so we don't really have a specific.
Correct, we don't have a specific dollar amount at this point in time. We do know that there's a need over ninety-five thousand dollars. Because we would have to bid it, and so we did go out and we found this piggybackable bid. Which will then allow us both to procure the items more quickly. And then when we do, we'll issue a purchase order that will come to the board for ratification.
Thank you.
So the intent then is you kinda save on bulk by making it, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, uh, seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Yeah, the unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point seven, authorized purchase of identification card printing equipment, software cards. Integration services and related supplies from Card Integrators Corporation. A trustee from trustee Witt, oh, I'm sorry, a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Jay. And a request to speak from trustee Lang.
Sa- same question here. Do we have any idea what the cost of this system uh, would be?
Not at this point in time.
So this is the security measure, I believe we got an email about for securing the labs a little bit? Is that my understanding of this?
Well, this is the new unified card system that we're putting in at all the campuses. And so as we're upgrading the systems and buying new cards. Again, this is a piggybackable bid that will allow us to purchase the equipment and the cards necessary in order to install them. But I don't, I'm not sure what email you're referring to, so I'm, I don't know if it addresses that or not.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought I meant, okay, we're good. So with that, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point eight, retiree OPEB trust actuarial report and recommended funding. We have a motion from trustee Jamal, a second from trustee Wright, and a request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Yes. Anne Marie, can you just explain this gap that we have and, and where it came from?
So we value our other post-employment benefit, that's what OPEB stands for. Um, our trust account annually as of December thirty-first. Unfortunately, if you recall, this December, the stock market kind of tanked. And so since the stock market went down, the value of our assets went down as of December thirty-first. And that was the date that they use to measure how much we have. Um, since that point in time, the market has rebounded. And we've made up everything, but since our actuarial study is dated as of December thirty-first. It is showing that we have a liability of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. That we need to fund in order to be fully funded.
Even though the, the uh, account value is higher than this difference is. Was at the end of December.
Correct, because what we do, and this goes into our audit report. We look at it as a specific date and time. And so as of that date, on December thirty-first, we were below what they calculated our liability to be. By the six hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So, you know, well, if you recall last December, um, December of twenty seventeen, when they did the value. We were, I think, four or five million dollars above what the actuarial determined value was. And so we didn't have to contribute any additional funds. So it really is a point in time calculation. And the, um, excuse me, the contribution that we make. In accordance with GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board's guideline, is a point in time. So I'm sure, I'm not sure, I hope that next year, December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. When we do the valuation, the stock market will be in a better point and it won't show that we have a liability any further.
So I was gonna ask our resident auditor if, if this is common practice and is we, I mean, is this something we have to do?
Again, I don't think that's, it's uncommon.
You went off. You were on, but then you went off.
Yeah, okay. And, and I guess the other thing is, is that our liability for OPEB will continue to accrue every year. So despite, e- even if at this point in time, we might still be okay. Um, any amounts that we would fund now would go to reduce that future liability, which is gonna do nothing but to continue to grow anyway, so. Um, I, I've got no serious objections to it.
No, we just don't contribute additional funds.
Yeah, well, you know, every little bit helps. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Cable come loose?
He lost his screen.
In the back.
Maybe it unplugged.
Sometimes it becomes loose in the back. Alright, we have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. And motion passes. We'll go ahead and go to six point nine. Board policy revisions for review and study. The hard work from the Board Policy Committee and others involved. We have a motion from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Wright to approve for review and study and request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Yes, I know I'm, we are, I'm on the subcommittee, so I've had a chance to review it, but I keep reading the sentence and I don't, it's under the.
Which one?
Uh, I'm trying to figure out which one. It has to do, I think, with um, foundations, which was the topic tonight.
Was it naming of college facilities, that's um.
No, I ju- I thought that foundation should have been plural in one instance. And now I can't remember because all these tracking changes are here, so.
Some foundations under the first paragraph in red.
Whi- which? Which policy is it? Yeah, I think that's.
Fifteen hundred, that's one I'm.
Correct.
Asking about.
I think that was it, and I thought.
And groups and foundations.
Foundation should have been plural.
Yeah.
Do you agree?
I agree.
Okay, and they're shaking their heads, because we have two foundations.
Oh, but it's only one foundation at a time.
Appropriate one.
So if you read.
Well, then maybe we need to add appropriate foundation.
It doesn't.
Oh, it's already appropriate, it's already in the sentence. In consultation with the appropriate.
With the appropriate.
Leadership groups and foundation. I got it.
Okay, alright, we're good. I don't like to lose out, do you?
Okay, trustee Lang.
Oh, very competitive.
Yes, since this is for review and study, I have a number of what I'll call wordsmithing changes. And I'm just gonna hand those to the chancellor for her to consider for when she brings back.
Alright, perfect. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I, I'm also looking at the um, the, the naming of college facilities. We were discussing that earlier. And I just wondered, I, I'm glad that the um, that the subcommittee looked at it, but do you think the foundations should look at this, or did, did they look at this also? Oh, they did look at it, okay, okay. I also wondered, I think I read it was like a million and a half to ma- name an athletic field. I can't find it now, but I think that's what I read.
It's line, it's Roman numeral, small Roman numeral two under item B.
B two.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
Three B two, one point five million or more for existing athletic field area.
A number of years ago, somebody asked me to um. Have someone make a donation to name one of the buildings at IVC and, and I think I was asking a million dollars for that. That was a long time ago. I didn't get it, but I, I asked, but, but um, um. Yeah, I didn't get it. Like, I, I got, I got this beautiful, beautiful letter of saying that they thanked me so much for asking and they were so pleased that I would ask them for that. But they just had other things they were donating their money for at this time. But anyway, so I guess we don't have an, an amount for putting their name on a building at this time. That was a number of years ago, anyway.
We do now.
We do now.
With this policy, we do.
Hey, look at it.
It's the whole point.
This is what we were talking about earlier.
A one.
A one.
Three, A.
So Marcia, if you're at three, sorry.
It doesn't give you an amount, it just.
A percentage, so if the building. A percentage, so if the building costs, say it costs twenty million dollars, then to get your name on that building, you have to pay for half of that.
I see what you mean, okay. So, so it really is a percentage. That's, that's why I didn't, it didn't say an amount. That's what, why I didn't understand that. Okay, okay. If the foundation agrees to this and says this is a fair amount?
If I can add, so we, this, the discussion of the foundations did come up at our board policy subcommittee, trustee Milchker. And we did add language in there that we just read regarding the, the grammar, potential grammar issues. So we did add in the fourth sentence, in consultation with the appropriate president, leadership groups and foundation. So that was, that was actually added by the subcommittee.
Great, thank you for doing that, appreciate that. It's good to have a subcommittee working on this.
You want to be on it?
Okay, trustee Witt.
I, don't worry, I like being on that committee. Great group of people. Okay, two things where it says in the second paragraph, general guidelines. I'm going to take that as general guidelines because if someone comes in and says, I'll give you forty percent to get my name on that building, are we going to turn it down? Are we?
Always the board's decision.
Okay, so I just wanted to.
Board, the board is the custodian of the property, not me and not any of the people who are employees. It's you, you are the custodians of the property on behalf of the public taxpayers who actually, whose money was actually used to build those buildings. So it is, it is in your hands to choose whether or not to accept or decline a donation.
I appreciate that. I just needed, that's when I, when I saw that general guidelines because I. And then the next, no, I don't need to, the B part, I, it's a portion of, so you would have to put it in dollars. I would still like it to be in percentages, but. Well, I had a problem with it in the committee, so we'll leave it as such.
Okay, seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote with a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point one zero board policy revisions for approval. We have trustee Witt with the motion and trustee Jamal with the second, trustee Lang with a request to speak.
Yeah, so the, the only one that I had a problem with was exhibit D, board policy one twenty four. First sentence, when we say special meetings may be called as needed. Well, I would hope we'd never call a meeting that wasn't needed, so I don't think as needed is needed.
I think you're right.
Must have been your ad, your edit. We can check the tracking.
I mean, I think it's safe to say, I mean, there are, there are boards that will get paid extra for committee meetings. And so we'll come up with reasons.
We're not one of those.
We don't get paid any extra for anything.
I think I have to agree with trustee Lang to say as needed is not needed.
Thank you.
Any, any other objections to that change?
No.
No, that's fine.
But I could add to it in the one, two, three, four, here we go, put a nickel in me now, to discuss a dire emergency? An emergency is an emergency. I like it though, it's fine. You see it? It's fine.
Is, that might be an ed code. Yeah, I think that's ed code.
That's, I think, what you guys raised.
Ed code is right, but it's.
Yeah, I think it is.
Emergency to me is an emergency.
I, I, I don't disagree with you, but that's an ed code thing.
No, I was just adding to it because of.
Some of this is code.
Yeah. So with that, trustee Witt and trustee Jamal, are you okay with the edit?
Yes.
Hearing that, no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point one one academic employee and classified administrator personnel actions.
No changes.
And nothing for me to read. All right, so with that, we have a motion from trustee Jamal and a second from trustee Milchker. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point one two faculty conversion to canvas one stipend, one-time stipends. We have a motion from trustee Witt, a second from trustee J. No requests to speak, go ahead and vote on the item. A six to one trustee vote and a student advisory yes vote, motion passes. Six point one three classified personnel actions.
No changes.
No changes. Motion trustee Jamal, a second from trustee J. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Someone still needs to vote. Unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Next, we have six point one four non-bargaining unit personnel action. Ratifying new personnel appointments, no changes, nothing to read out. Trustee J motion, second from trustee Lang. No requests to speak, go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. That, we move on to reports, seven point one Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers, any questions there? Seven point two staff response to public comments. Again, thank you very much for doing this. This is from the last board meeting. If you have access to the agenda, you can read the response to staff. My assumption is this was communicated to the maker of the comments as well. Is this information provided to them? Do we know? I mean, that would be part of the process, I would think, is to respond directly to the speaker as well, if we can. So they know that we're listening in case they don't read the board meetings. Perfect, excellent. Oh, trustee Jamal.
So I, too, want to thank the staff for developing a response to this. This is an important issue and this did come up at the last board meeting. I did, I think it was the Saddleback comments. It seemed that there were a lot of pronouns used of people doing certain things and tasks. It just didn't seem to flow right. Maybe you want to, Elliot, go back and take a look at it? It, it seemed like more of an internal memo you would share with each other as opposed to publishing in, in the board book. I think there's well intentioned. I didn't see anything that was inappropriate about it. It just could use maybe a little polish for a presentation. Thank you.
Okay, student trustee Wong.
Yes, I would also like to give my thanks for this. It's very comprehensive and very good. I would also just like to acknowledge that, looking at the first page and all the steps that are going to be taken, the district services preferred name campaign, it will launch in twenty nineteen, the district services preferred pronoun campaign, campaign is in development. The third one, the district wide standards for gender neutral restrooms for future construction in development. And seeing as a lot of these, they're obviously very good campaigns and very needed campaigns. But just acknowledging that the fact that they're in development and then they're going to be launching, I think it's very necessary to acknowledge the fact that there are students that have needed this before and that are going through it now. And to acknowledge that, even though, you know, it's my last term here. And for students that are, you know, along with me in my peers and my years, well, they didn't have this while they were at their time at IBC or Saddleback or ATEP. And I'm very glad that we'll have it in the future, but also to acknowledge that this is what they're going through now. And these, while these, while these campaigns are very needed, like I said, and very good, they are going through it now and they didn't have these while they were experiencing it now. So I would just like to acknowledge that.
Okay, thank you. Seven point three facilities plan status report. Seeing no questions. Seven point four monthly financial status report. Seeing an OPEB trust fund, we already kind of talked about that a little bit. So moving on to reports from administration and governance groups, Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, no report.
Okay, Faculty Association.
Good evening trustees, Chancellor Burke, it's a pleasure to be back, even however briefly, speaking for Kurt Meyer tonight who had to be out of town. Within the last month, the Saddleback College community and the district as a whole lost a treasured fam, family member in Professor Lee Haggerty. During his over three decades of service to our district, Lee was not only a multiple faculty association president, he was academic senate president, he was a longtime chief negotiator for the faculty association and served those organizations extremely well. But not only did he serve our district, he was a CCA rep for years, he was a CTA director at the statewide level and represented California as an NEA rep for a number of years and, and served faculty all over the country in that regard. But maybe his greatest legacy is the fact that he was a beloved educator to his students. He was a professional like no one else. And I think his, his contribution will be the excellence in education that he provided his students. And he was a, a friend, a mentor and a role model to all of us. And I think that going forward, we need to remember Lee in the way that we interact with our students and provide education to our community. So I'd like us to remember Lee tonight as we go forward and go on with our semester.
Thank you.
I thought his greatest legacy was approaching me at the NEA conference in New Orleans and recruiting me to run for board. He was a great man. Really appreciate those comments, thank you. Next, we have Vice Chancellor Technology and Learning Services.
No report.
Vice Chancellor Human Resources.
Yes, Reeve report. I want to acknowledge the classified day that was held on March twentieth and the classified senate leadership. I'm not going to steal Amy's thunder, but I do want to say Amy's leadership was terrific. She led a small group that actually put that program on. The vice chancellors and the presidents and their leadership teams were able to attend the lunch, so thank you. Amy, their theme was a superhero theme, but they did a fantastic job, so kudos to you and your team, Amy. To the Faculty Association, I want to extend my gratitude. First, let me thank the district's team. It was a, a lot of commitment by the district staff. And it was Dr. Chris McDonald, Dr. Juan Avalos, Dr. Marina Amini, Christina Hinkel, Dr. Georgina Guy, Keith Schakelford, Kim McCord and my executive assistant, Deborah Garcia. To Louis Long, the chief negotiator for the Faculty Association. Only a chief negotiator to another chief negotiator knows how difficult these negotiations can be. And I found Louis to be tough, smart, ethical and very well prepared. It's never an easy process to negotiate a successor agreement with this many articles that were open. And we worked our way through it, we listened to each other and were able to craft a new deal. So I want to thank Louis Long for his leadership on that. And then finally, if you're watching March Madness, Arizona State Women's Basketball is in the Sweet Sixteen. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chancellor Business Services.
To follow up on the, the classified day, I wanted to congratulate Lois Schwartz, who is the contracts specialist under business services, who won the district services classified employee of the year. So I think it was a well-deserving award for Lois, so congratulations to her again.
Thank you. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
Yes, Amy Hunter, I'm the president-elect for Irvine Valley College Classified Senate. And I'm filling in for Marina Nunez, who can be here. So I just wanted to extend our gratitude and our thanks to the board trustees and to the chancellor, Kathleen Burke, for supporting us for classified day. We had a wonderful day on March twentieth at Socha University, which we had about a little over two hundred attendees there from district services, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. Like to extend some additional thanks out to our vice chancellors, Cindy Viscachill and Marie Gabel, Dr. Robert Bermuda, Dr. Glenn Rockmore, President of Irvine Valley College for his continued support. And to various additional people here at the district, keeping it short here on the time here. Just wanted to also extend a special thanks to Nathan Quach, who is our co-chair. All of our Irvine Valley College Classified, our Saddleback College Classified under Darren England's leadership. And also to Scott Green, who, under CSEA leadership, for helping out with the day. We had a wonderful day of professional development training sessions as well as a wonderful luncheon commemorating our, our classified employees. Wanted to extend a special thanks out to, or acknowledge those who did receive outstanding employee of the years, which was Lois Schwartz of the District Services, to Rachel Manders at Irvine Valley College, and for Saddleback, Craig Connors. Just a couple of other things we wanted to mention about June third, we'll be doing a summit at Irvine Valley College. We're working on that. We are working on our election process. And thank you to nominating Robert Flornay for his nomination. And congrats again to all of our classified for, classified day.
Thank you very much. I guess we'll go next then to Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Again, I would like to thank Amy too. She did a wonderful job. It was a very difficult task for classified or setting up classified day. The committee worked hard, but Amy worked very hard to get that day to come to fruition, so special thanks to her. At Saddleback College, March eighth, we had our staff appreciation luncheon. We served over two hundred staff members in SSC two twelve. We had Lucille's barbecue and then another special thanks to Chancellor Burke as well as the executive administration at Saddleback College. They served us, so that was pretty interesting. And then last to report, again, just touching on classified day, we announced our classified employee of the year, Craig Connor, admissions and record systems specialist one. He was also our past classified senate president, so a well-deserved award for Mr. Craig. Thank you.
And CSEA.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the classified staff, we want to thank Amy Hunter and Nathan Quach and the entire committee for putting together such a very well-organized classified day. We also really appreciate that Dr. Viscachill, Anne Marie Gabel, executive director Kim Widdis, Dr. Bermuda and all those who came to out to support the classified staff. It means a lot when the district is also there to help share in the celebration and the teamwork that we try to display every single day, but also a classified day when it's really is a very good day for classifieds. So thank you very much for that.
All right. So that, I would like to adjourn in memory of Professor Lee Haggerty and wish you all a good night.